Hi ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this great and scheduled meeting of the City Commission meeting. And this time Commissioner Castillo has invited Pastor Pastor Vezes to lead us in indication.
Good evening. I'd like to just read Proverbs 11:14 for you all today. "Without the guidance of good leaders, a nation falls; but many good advisors can save it." Father, we thank you for this group of individuals that are here today, Lord. We thank you for the rain that you've sent us first of all, Lord, and we thank you for what you're doing in this city. We know there's a lot of work to be done, Lord, and so I ask you right now, Lord, that you put wisdom, clarity, and direction, Father, and the people that are here today standing in front of me. These are people that are here, Lord, not by right, Lord, but by your privilege, Lord. And so we thank you, God. Give them the fear of you, Lord, so that they can know exactly what they need to do and when they need to do it. Let them never be afraid to stand for what is right. Father, you have blessed the city, and so now I ask you, let us bless you in return. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Please join me in the presence of the ladies and gentlemen.
The Ladies and Ladies and the United States of America, into the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We're glad to have all of you here at our meeting tonight. We have some special, very special recognition that I think you all will be glad to be a part of tonight, this evening. That brings us into item one, which is the presentation of a proclamation to Mrs. Ruth B. Runyon Peg, claiming her 100th birthday. So if I could have you, Peg, come join me up here with all of her family that are here tonight, or as many of them would like to come up here. We'd like to bring you up to the front of the room and turn it around and let everybody see you while I read your proclamation. Whereas Mrs. Ruth B. Runyon Peg was born July 26, 1912, in rural Columbia County, Pennsylvania, to Robert B. and Mary Ellen Runyon in Town Hill, Luzerne County, Pennsylvania. And whereas Peg and her younger brother Al got their first eight years of education in a one-room schoolhouse, in 1929 she graduated from Huntington Mills High School. And whereas Mrs. Peg, at the age of six years old, watched in fascination as her family helped the local doctor turn their kitchen into an emergency operating room. And whereas Mrs. Peg, after graduating from high school, entered training at Geisinger Memorial Hospital School of Nursing in Danville, Pennsylvania, and received her RN degree in 1933, followed by postgraduate work in obstetrics at the Margaret Peg Hospital in New Jersey and Jewish Hospital in New York City. And whereas while in training, Mrs. Peg met her future husband, Robert Bob Peg. They were married April 22, 1936, and settled in Danville and had a daughter, Marlene, and son, Robert. And whereas Mrs. Peg's husband was in the Pennsylvania National Guard and after attending OCS was commissioned to second lieutenant. And when the guard was federalized in January 1941, they began a 20-year active military career. It took them through World War II and the Korean War and the Cold War periods. And whereas in their duty stations in Louisiana, Indiana, Kentucky, Germany, Oklahoma, and Texas, Mrs. Peg was involved with base and community civic act groups, as well as school, church, and scouting activities. And whereas Mrs. Peg came to the Rio Grande Valley after her husband's retirement in 1960, he accepted a job with U.S. Customs in Brownsville, and Mrs. Peg quickly decided Harlingen was definitely where she wanted to live. And we're so glad she decided that. And whereas Mrs. Peg and her husband moved into their Parkwood area home in December 1961, and despite the trauma of being flooded with almost seven feet of water after Hurrican Beale in 1967, this house remained headquarters for the family for the last 50 years. And whereas Mrs. Peg has been an active member of Grace Lutheran Church, where she's held numerous offices in the women's organizations and served on the church council, a volunteer for 13 years at the former state chest hospital in Rangerville Road, and a volunteer with Valley Baptist Hospital on Zory for 12 years, serving as president and operating a gift shop. And whereas Mrs. Peg was a member of the U.S. Customs Wives Organization, the Newcomers Club, and Fine Arts Club, organized trips and tours for the Shepherd Center, Senior Citizens Group, and is a life member of Town and Country Garden Club. And whereas Mrs. Peg and her late husband were active in the Harlingen Country Club, enjoyed golfing at Plain Bridge, belonging to several dance clubs and bowling leagues. And whereas Mrs. Peg is no longer as active as she was before, she does enjoy playing bridge, reading, working crossword puzzles, and corresponding with friends and relatives in this country and abroad. She's a avid Houston Astros fan and rarely misses a game on TV and maintains her interest in national and local affairs. Whereas Mrs. Peg has been a widow since 1978, truly enjoys the company of her daughter, Marlene Peg of Harlingen, her son Colonel, retired Robert Peg of Corpus Christi, two grandchildren and step-grandchildren, and 11 great-grandchildren and step-grandchildren now there. Therefore, I, Chris Boswell, behalf of the City of Harlingen and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2012, as Mrs. Ruth B. Runyon Peg's 100th birthday and day. And encourage the public's recognition of Mrs. Peg, a friend of Harlingen, and congratulations be extended to her. Mrs. Peg, we are so honored that you have been such an important part of our community for such a long time. We're so grateful that you chose Harlingen and stayed here for all these, now half a century. And while 100 years old might sound like a long time, you know, the City of Harlingen's a little bit older than that. It's 102, so you're just pretty young compared to the rest of the city. So we want to...
A hundred wishes for all of you.
Well, thank you so much. Congratulations. Happy Birthday. Thank you.
I hope, tell them, I can't talk loud, but tell them that I hope that they all have celebration for their 100th.
And she wishes you all a happy birthday out of your 100th birthday when you get there. So she can do it, you can do it, we can all make it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item two is the presentation certificates of appreciation for assistance and due diligence for purpose of all.
I'd like to call up Paul, Betty. These are both certificates of appreciation from the City as to the work that these two guys are doing. Everybody can see how all the parks in the city are actually getting a lot better. And with all the work going in at the golf course and the diligence that these guys have used to bring everything up to standards that we expect as taxpayers, it is amazing. And they both need to be congratulated for the reference. So congratulations.
Item three is the public announcement of events. Are there any public events that I would like to announce? All right, then we go to item four, Neighborhood Clean Sweep Program for the last 2012 in Washington, East Lee, South Street, the First and Third Streets, District Two.
Mayor, I just wanted to speak about the recent Neighborhood Clean Sweep that we've had. The City has these eight monthly, and this particular event was held on the side of Ave July 7, Queen East Avenue and East Lee, between First and Third Streets. Very successful event, again, fantastic participation from staff. I was there most of the morning, and there was a lot of participation. We utilized community service individuals to help along the staff pick up the debris. And as you can see, we have picked up two tons of debris and 48 tires from a very small area of the community. Again, these go on monthly in different parts of the city for those who aren't aware of it. And let me get some pictures going here. There you go. Here we go, some of the staff that was out here, some of the volunteers that participated in this last event. There's some of the debris that gets picked up. For those that aren't familiar with the program, we mail out to the affected area for folks that they can put this debris out on their curb, and then we come by on Saturday and we pick it up. We have volunteers that help load it into the containers. Again, this helps get some of this stuff out of the, you know, backyards and out of the houses to help produce a better quality of life for residents and to make it convenient for them to clean their properties up. Again, y'all can see some of the debris and some of the volunteers. There's a, as we talked about, 48 tires were removed from this particular area. So I think we're, you know, we continue to make strides to help clean Harlingen up, and I think this is another good example of a quality effort by staff and our volunteers to help do that. And I just want to, I want to thank them personally for their participation. And I'm not sure when the next one is, but we ought to probably go ahead and announce it. It's coming up in early August, so.
At the next 11.
Okay. We'll announce the next location at the next City Commission meeting, but again, if anybody wants to help volunteer participate, this is definitely a worthwhile effort for the City.
Well, it's a great initiative and underscores the City's commitment to cleaning up our community and beautifying it. So thank you for being out there on Saturday. Commissioner Lek, would you want to present these certificates with me?
Sure.
We'd like to recognize some of the that were out there on July 7. Alfred Ibana, a staff member charged Southwest Key Program. Armando Matra, also with the Southwest Key Program. Albert Nunez, Southwest Key Program. Juan Tamas, and Southwest Key Program. Is Joseph Dela Rosa here? Joseph, up here. But we want to thank you guys very much for what you did, being out there helping us clean our city up and really getting involved with and understanding how important it is to keep our city clean. And what that does for our community is the sense of pride that we can have in our community when we know that it is cleaned up and we take care of our city as much as we can. So Juan? Thank you, congratulations. Albert? Thank you, congratulations. Armando? Thanks very much. Appreciate your service. And Mr. Ibana, thank you so much for leading these young men out there to make sure that they help us. Thank you, Mayor. Come on up and get a picture. All right, thanks. Item five is the Elderly Assistance Program. How long will that take? Sure. Elderly Assistance Program, 1602 and 1604, East Taylor School.
Mayor, Commissioners, since we're on cleanup programs, the City has another cleanup initiative, and it's the Elderly Assistance Program. And in this particular program, what we do is we actually help or assist elderly people. In this particular situation, elderly people at 1602 and 1604 East Taylor were assisted, and we actually had some volunteers from D-BAR contractors that assisted our staff with this. And I wanted to show you some pictures of the before and after. And our staff has been really good in trying to schedule at least a monthly cleanup for this particular program, and we want to thank them and all the volunteers that participated as well.
Okay, excellent, excellent program. Thank you for that presentation. Item six is the approval of the amendments of regular being approved in 2012. Are there any additions or corrections to the amendments? There are none, it's our motion to approve then.
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the regular meetings. Second.
All who favor say aye. Period. Item seven, second consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda on final reading?
Second.
All who favor say aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Would you like to request a chart of recess? If you'd clear out?
All right, we want to thank you, thank you again, and congratulations. Happy Birthday. All right, I'm going to skip to item 17, which is to consider, discuss, and provide directions to the City Attorney up to promote the valid language in the City Charter Amendment election on November 6, 2012. I think we're going to borrow and present on this. Do we need to go into executive session?
Mayor, yes. We were asked to assist on this matter through City Manager and City Attorney's Office, and there's definitely some legal content here that we believe needs to be presented to you in executive session.
Motion to go into executive session under chapter 551 and consult with the Attorney on this matter.
Second.
All who favor say aye. All right, the City Commission is going to retire to this back chamber to go into executive session to consult with our attorney on this item. We'll try to make this as brief as possible, and then we'll be back in the room and do our business. And we'll go to item, take another item out of the order and go to item 13, which is to consider and take action to approve a request for new facilities usage agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Texas Youth Football Association, Harlingen Hawks for use of the soccer fields at the Sports Complex on Wilson Road for practices only.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The Texas Youth Football Association, Harlingen Hawks, or the Taifa Harlingen Hawks, are a new football league. They requested, by the way, they're not too difficult to identify in this room. They are here in force tonight. They have requested use of some fields at the Tom Wilson Youth Sports Complex on Wilson Road for practices only. The fields that we're talking about are the old soccer fields here at the front of the complex. These are the fields used by their contractor, the National Bronco. This is our rental softball complex. And so these fields, there's two full-size soccer fields here. They want to use them for practices only Monday through Thursday, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. from the end of this month through the end of the calendar year. They will be playing games at another facility. They have a, or either have an agreement, or they're working on an agreement with the school district to play games. This will just be for practices four nights a week for three hours. These fields are lit, so when the time changes, we have to light up these fields. This is a standard facility usage agreement. Again, it will end at the end of the year. They are a nonprofit under the Taifa umbrella, and the insurance has been approved by Risk Management and is included in your packet. Staff recommends approval. Parks and Recreation Board recommends approval.
How's the commission of the fields?
They're decent. We're going to work on them. There's some irrigation issues. They haven't been used in quite a while for anything formal, but the lights, the lights are in good shape.
All right, is there a motion to approve the request for the new facility usage agreement? Second. Any discussion? All who favor say aye. Motion carries. All right. All right, we all have a, we all have a good season.
We're going to try and bring home the Texas, the state trophy.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, great, great.
Mayor, I had just wanted to comment on, as far as the football leagues, I know I've been talking with Jeff and Dan Serrano. They've been doing some really good stuff. I think Jerry's aware of that. They've been working with, trying to make some improvements on the existing football area for the youth football league. And for their benefit, I want to make sure they understand that, I know staff's looking at ways, trying to use some imagination of how we can improve some of the venues for them. And I think we have some really good venues for a lot of very important sports activities for our youth, and I think this is one of the areas that we need to do something more as a community. So the challenge right now is staff and other than looking at ideas to see what we can do to make the most out of what we already have, maybe some shared facilities, see what we can do. But I just wanted you to be aware that we are going to be looking at using some imagination and see what we can do to improve the availability of areas, not only for your practice group, but for hopefully tournaments that we can sponsor and we can have here in our community. And I think that would be a good thing, so good luck. I want you all to do it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Item A, consider to take action to approve City Commissioners' report on the Urban Clean Sweep Program.
Mayor and City Commission, my recommendation is that we appoint Ms. Elvia Trevino as the interim finance director. Ms. Trevino has worked for the City for 36 years now. She has served as assistant finance director for 24 years.
Who is over here?
She's up there in the corner.
Right. Turn around.
And she's been a co-administrator for eight years, and then she has been interim finance director for seven different times throughout her career. And that's my recommendation, Mayor.
My good recommendation, is there a motion to...
Mayor, would you make the motion that we accept...
Second.
...continue management. Say aye. All who favor say aye. Okay, well, good luck, y'all, yeah. Thank you for stepping in again. Appreciate it. We're going to get it out of nine, nine, and kind of bring that back to later date. Out of 10, consider to take action. Now, the Harlingen Water Works received a public offer to sell approximately six acre tract of land being a part of Block 3, Tuesday, Place Subdivision Survey 306, Cameron County, Texas, issued by Matt Renter, volume 5, page 6, the Cameron County, Texas map records.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here before you. Darrell Gunn, General Manager, Harlingen Water Works. It's been quite some time since there's been a real property transaction by the Water Works, but the charter is very clear that any real property transaction, sale, or purchase, must have the approval of the elected commissioner or the Harlingen City Commission. So we had recently went through inventory of properties and determined that this six acre tract of land that was acquired approximately 1995 was an operational maintenance issue and therefore didn't see a need for it at this time, and so in discussion with it, and it was approved by the Board of Trustees to surplus or try to dispose of this six acre tract. So in light of that, we did proceed with a professional appraisal. That appraisal was attached to your backup documentation. The, just for your information in the public, the property was acquired in 95 for $43,000 and is currently appraised at $90,000, and we would just like to make a public offer for that property at this time. It's located, it's six acres, it's located on Baker Potts Road, about half a mile south of Business 83, about a mile and a half south of the expressway. But happy to stand for any questions at this time.
What was the original purpose of the...
I honestly, not sure. I mean, I've heard that there was a prospect for a lift station or water facility, or there's been such turnover staff, there's not real, there's not an exact record of why it was acquired. And it's in a, it's sort of in an unusual pitch.
It's a low area, isn't it?
It's a low area, I guess. But it is adjacent to some irrigatable farmland that it could be transitioning to that property. It's adjacent to another piece of property that opens it up to Tan Lane that would give it additional access. So there are some opportunities for the tract by the surrounding properties, or there's other purposes for it over and above what we can use it for.
All right, is there a motion to allow the Water Works to proceed with a public offer? Any other discussion? All who favor say aye. Motion carries. Item 11, consider to take action to allow the Harlingen Water Works to proceed with the purchase of approximately 0.5 acre tract of land located within Block 12 of the Sturit Place Subdivision Survey 139 for future location of an elevated water storage tank.
Thank you again. We, our current active master plan, which has been updated with in-house studies over the years, showed the need for elevated storage in the western portion of our distribution system. The growth projections of that original study, which was done in the 80s, have not, have delayed the necessity of a tower. But we now determine that the Pendleton Tower is in our capital improvements program to dispose and remove of that tower. In order to do that, we need to replace that capacity or volume with a new tower, and it's proposing it out in the western portion of the system, which would be more appropriate for, hydraulically for the distribution system. We've looked around in the areas, we did prospectus of sites, we found this site just north of the expressway on Tan Lane. We have an appraisal for this particular tract and are requesting authorization to proceed with the acquisition, or negotiation for the acquisition of this property. Again, this was previously approved by the Board of Trustees, but again, charter is clear that the, any real property acquisition must be approved by the Harlingen City Commission. We think, we think the location is, it's a good location for hydraulically. We have a transmission main there, it's in a high-growth area, and it will be a good location as a portal to the city for, and what we would propose to do is a very, very similar type of tank that we have on the Loop, Loop 499, what's called Harlingen Proud Tank. It'd be a composite tower similar to that, and it would, it would be a portal into Harlingen, you know, from any eastbound traffic on the expressway.
Any way we could trade a piece of that other property to this half acre?
We can make that offer, but I...
Well, you're, we're looking at a half acre for $35,000.
Yes.
About $70,000 for this acre, and we're going to sell our six acre for $90,000.
Correct. Well, it's a, this is prime farmland, ideally located right off the front of the road of the expressway.
Is there not a more economically, a curable piece of property that we could use, something that wouldn't run $70,000 a acre?
And looking at the comparables in the other site, in the backup documents, there's several sites that were looked at, and they're all going to appraise, we think. We didn't get individual appraisals on all of them, obviously because of the cost, but we think they're all in the vicinity, they're going to have the same comparables. And we, half acre is ideal for us because it lowers our maintenance cost of maintaining the site versus a larger tract, which just is vacant space that needs maintenance.
Well, I guess my next question is maybe not necessarily relative to the piece of property, but you mentioned a composite tower.
Yes, sir.
That you want to put on there. So does that mean that that old rusty tower that is still erected over at the Pendleton Park is not going to be used in the future?
No, sir. That one will be removed and taken down and disposed of. When we, what a composite tower means, the standpipe, the structure is concrete, similar to the, I mean, identical to the tower that we have on the Loop. That was one of the first composite tanks in the state of Texas, and it's served the city extremely well. city extremely well. And it would be a very similar type tank.
So I guess I just want to step out of bounds a little bit. When are we going to take that tank down?
We'd like to take it down immediately. However, the, if we did so, we'd be in violation of the state capacity, elevated capacity requirement rules. In other words, that capacity needs to be replaced and expanded with this new tower. In other words, if we, if we, if we take that tower out of service now, we would not have the elevated storage capacity to meet the state, current state criteria.
If those above ground storage tanks don't, don't help us in our above ground storage capacity requirement?
Physically, hydraulically, yes. But by the state rule, they're, they, they don't, they don't differentiate. They, they require elevated storage on this, on a particular rule. There, there are cities that, and systems that have gone to one hundred percent. I mean, there are, there are systems, particularly coastal cities, that have no elevated towers. And they go strictly by that criteria. But in order to do so, excuse me, you have to have very exotic generation, power generation systems, standby power, and all kinds of things in order to, to substitute that storage for, for elevated storage.
On the elevated, when do you anticipate construction of the new one?
Well, if, if this, if you authorize this, we will proceed to negotiate an acquisition of the property. We'll complete geotactical work. We'll, we'll initiate the design of the, of the project. And construction of these towers takes, because of the weather conditions here, it usually takes nine months to a year. So it will take, take some time to do so.
So at that point, then you can decommission the other tower?
Yes. And, and we can explore with the state, the possibly given us a grace period that where we could, before this one is, since it started to complete funding, et cetera, whatever, that we could evaluate getting permission to. In other words, if we could take that tower down, we immediately know that we don't meet the criteria. But to circumvent some, a fine or circumvent a, a misdemeanor order.
I don't think the tower is that much of a problem, it's just that it needs to be painted, right?
Right. And, and interior of the tower, the paint scheme is much better than exterior. But that being said, it, we're still looking at two or three hundred thousand dollars paying the tower. And we just didn't see making that investment in a structure that we would immediately be taking down.
So what you're basically saying, because of state laws, you got to build a new tower before you take the old one down.
Yes, sir. To be in compliance.
You build a new tower, you really don't need the tower built, and you got, you got more green paint.
You got that on your capital improvement plan, but it didn't?
Yes, sir.
Is there a, is there a motion to allow the Water Works to proceed with the first amendment?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I just don't see enough there, that's why we want to talk to you.
Well, we'd all like to see that tower, we'd all like to see the old tower come down, especially now with the veterans of morale that's right next to it.
Oh, we would too.
You're going to paint the new one, right, Daryl?
I, well, I'm a party to consider an ordinance on first reading for specific use permit to allow an air monitoring station with a tower and multifamily residential M two districts and neighborhood services in that district located sixteen oh two West Teague Avenue, bearing the description of Block One, Block One, H C I S D, Ninth Grade Academy subdivision, F T C Q.
Evening, Mayor Commissioners. The Texas Commission on Environmental Quality is requesting a specific use permit to allow air monitoring station on the subject property specifically to monitor the air of the Brownsville Harlins, Seventy-Dollar Metropolitan and statistical areas. This station is federally mandated by the Environmental Protection Agency. Per the Code of Federal Regulations, two monitoring stations are required within this region. One is currently in Brownsville, and the E.P. request of the second one to be located in Harlins. This is a subject property would be generally located on this corner here, which is a property of the school district and a future ninth grade academy. This location was approved by the school district. This is a proposed monitoring station, which would be on a forty-four by forty-four foot path area. Excuse me. This is the area view showing where the property would be located on. This would be fenced by, around it, and would require some little maintenance landscaping around the fence there in this property. Public hearing was conducted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius were notified, which we mailed out about seventy-one notices. Staff didn't receive any concerns regarding proposed requests. Staff's recommend approval. The P and Z Commission also recommends approval, subject to applying to comply with the required regulations administered by the Planning, Fire Prevention, Building Inspections, and Environmental Services Department. Take any questions on the item?
Good question. I thought any federal or state regulatory agency are exempt from S U Ps or any zoning companies?
Then where they were, if they were located on federal property, this one, or state property, this one is not state property or federal property.
You know, another question I'd like to ask is, when they start doing this, aren't they going to make any of their reports public to the, to the city or anything?
Yes. Yes, they were.
Do you want them? I don't want to get too tired.
Right. Let me go to item A, which is a public hearing. Open the public hearing, which I would like to speak for against this specific use permit. Harry, no one opposes the public hearing. Go to item B. Consider to take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for the aforementioned specific use permit. Maybe if we need to read them again.
Ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, ordinance number zero seven dash twenty-seven of the City of Harlins to address specific use permit to the Texas Commission on Environmental Services Quality, T C Q, to allow an air monitoring station within a tower in residential multifamily M two district and neighborhood services district located at sixteen oh two West Teague Avenue, bearing a legal description of Block One, Block One, H C I S D, Ninth Grade Academy subdivision, subject to complying with requirements administered by the Planning, Building Inspections, Health Fire Prevention, Environmental Services Departments, providing for publication or dening other matters related to foregoing.
Second. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item fourteen is, consider to take action to approve a motion amendment amount of nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars for variable frequency driver replacement for golf course irrigation system from the golf course certified.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Last week, we had some issues with our irrigation computer that monitors the RPMs and the, the timing of our irrigation system. The circuits failed. We had a tech come in from San Marcos, and he, we did an emergency P.O. and, and went ahead and replaced the, the components. The, the balance of this will have to come out of reserve funds, because we didn't have, this late in the year, we didn't have enough in our, in our annual budget to cover it.
Same problem you talked about in the budget?
Yes, sir.
Budget is the same. Yeah. Who jinxed it? Who jinxed?
Fair motion to approve the budget amendment.
By the way, around Victor Park also.
We approve the budget amendment.
No.
Second. Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fifteen.
Don't let Dan get around that.
Consider to take action to release municipal lease totally in the amount of seven thousand three dollars fifty-four cents, two acres, more or less. Situated Block Sixty-Seven, David Sees and Subdivision, Cameron County, Texas, described in D. David White Thirty of Ninety-Forty-Six, from Jared Williams, to Edna F. Rogers, and all, in volume three eighty-one, Page Four ninety-eight, D. Rivers, Cameron County.
Ms. Goulthor, Proctor Daniel put this on the agenda because there are some tax lanes that are junior lanes that survive the tax sale. When you have a tax sale of a piece of property like this, these lanes do not survive, the junior lanes do not survive. And so she's asking, asking the, the City Commission to authorize the release of those lanes. So we're in compliance with the law. There are, you know, there's case law on this. There's a case I had in Houston Court of Appeals, two thousand and seven, where someone, where the city tried to maintain these lanes and not release them, and they were sued, and the court of appeals ruled that the lanes were, had to be released, or they were considered an illegal fee. So we're asking that the lanes be, be released to comply with the statute as well as current case law.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and to take action to release municipal lease totally in the amount of seven thousand, three dollars fifty-four cents. And it's going to be carries.
Second.
Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item sixteen, consider to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading approved of negotiated resolution between the cities served by Texas Gas Service Cities and the Texas Gas Service regarding the company's May First, two thousand and twelve cost of service adjustment filing and June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve statement of the Ten filing declaring existing rates unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect the rate adjustments consistent with negotiated settlement and finding the rates to be set by the S O I final tariffs to be just reasonable and provided for recovery of the cities and T G S reasonable and necessary rate case expenses.
This, this, in this situation, we're asking the commission to approve an ordinance that basically approves the agreement that our attorney, representing not only our city, but all the cities in the valley, negotiated. The attorney that all the cities have, who represented us and other cities in the valley, negotiated with, with Texas Gas Service with regard to a rate for their services. Our attorney, who, if you read in the backup material, has worked on these cases for twenty-five years, he said, I think this is the first time in twenty-five years he'd recommend approval. They had, they had a, we had a rate agreement with them, but the amount they believe was just inadequate for them to perform their, their work, their background about purchasing a pipeline, maintenance of that line. So they had a right under the law to come back for another adjustment. But our attorneys negotiated essentially a better deal with them, and so this ordinance is, is the same one that's being adopted by other cities essentially in the valley to approve that. We recommend that you do approve it, approve that adjustment. I was, I went to a meeting on this with other people. I believe the mayor was at that meeting, and every, all the other city representatives there seemed to be generally in agreement that this was, this was a, a good deal. In fact, I guess one of the most interesting things was that our attorney said he did not recommend going before the railroad commission. He said, said, we have like a fifty-fifty chance on that, and the cost of the legal fees on that could be as much as, to the, to the rate payers could be, a dollar twenty added per month, whereas this is the doll, this negotiated deal's a dollar forty per month. So it's just, it appears to be a very good deal.
Do you want to read the caption?
Oh, I'm sorry. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Harlins, Texas, approving a negotiated resolution between the city and Texas Gas Service, T G S of the company regarding the company's May First, two thousand and twelve cost of service adjustment, COSA filing, and June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve statement of intent filing declaring existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting tariffs that reflect rate adjustments consistent with the negotiated settlement, and finding the rates to be set by the S O I filed tariffs to be just and reasonable, providing for the recovery of the city's reasonable and necessary rate case expenses, adopting a savings clause determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Mating Act, clearing the effective date repealing any prior ordinance is inconsistent with this ordinance, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and the city's legal council.
Some of them for approval?
Second.
Discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Most opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item eighteen, consider to take action whether Dr. Zoo sues dental insurance contract with MedLife.
Mayor, City Commission, we received a renewal notice from MedLife for dental insurance. The offer was for a two-year plan with a five percent increase. When we received the offer, we went back to them, and today, and I placed a copy there for you, we received another offer with a third option in that it's a one-year contract with only a two percent increase, based on that, and with no change in benefits. So staff is recommending accepting the renewal with a two percent increase and with no change in benefits.
And not employee paid, or?
It's, it's an employee paid insurance. The city does not pay. I've also included a little graph there showing how much it actually impacts the employees. And the most that an employee will pay will be in the, like, if they have the high plan, it'll cost, it'll have an increase of sixteen dollars a year, which translates to seventy cents of pay period. So based on those rates, we, we think it's a good deal, and we're recommending approval.
Is there a motion to approve? Stand to review this.
Mayor, make motion to approve staff recognition.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And, 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 I'd just like to reflect that Commissioner Castillo did abstain from this for the record and did file an affidavit to that effect, and retired with the city.
Item nineteen, other board appointments?
I guess I have one. This is planning, this is the planning department. I just believe that Holler Pickford has been turned in to ever so. Lena has a, Lena signed, who is in power.
Any other board points? Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm pointing at the motion second session due to the S O I, Chapter Five Hundred and One, Section Fifty-D, we can see again, because section's five fifty-one, point oh A, so, five fifty-one, point oh seven, one, regarding commercial financial information from business prospect, the city commission conducting economic development negotiations to discuss to, and deliberate financial analysis to business prospect. Notice, project leaders seek legal advice to city attorney, also seek legal advice returning, you know, lease cream, acquaintance in Harlins, White Plains, baseball club, free use of baseball stadium. Is there a motion to approve? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's go back into the back rooms, so that I have the paper cameras down, and we won't be in there very long. See, y'all can stay here if you want.
You guys are ready to go. Top to the door.
Okay, well, last item, well, we're out of executive session, Sub fifteen, and last item on the agenda, I've got one city, citizen communication, no one has signed up, so the meeting is adjourned.